I was about to say, I was about to say the work has been scheduled. So. The system manager took care of it.
The city manager.
Deputy city manager.
Good evening, peace and blessings to everyone. I see Director Mordaga here. Before I begin, I just want to thank the Hackensack Police Department, Officer James, Officer Ziza, Officer Carucci, and Officer Williams. As a therapeutic mother, we have, I have children occasionally that I have to put in Bergen Regional for their behaviors, and these officers came to my aid. They gave me rides when I was able to drive. So I just wanted to commend Mr. Mordaga and his officers before I begin what I had to say. I did submit a letter with a couple of issues I was concerned about in the community. I don't know if you had a chance to address it. It was the stop sign on the corner of Haynes and Stanley, which the community would like to see facing north and south instead of east and west. We had people fly off Passaic Street during the school days, and all during the day, and we would like to see a stop, stop sign there to slow them down from zooming through there. That's in the letter, you can address that later. The residents in the area of James, Berry, and Second Street, that property has, it seems to us, been contaminated with green water all summer. They've been filling in that area in the past week. They've added, they're starting to fill the green area in with dirt. I know the drillers were there on Tuesday. They started, they brought dirt in on Wednesday, and they started filling in the area.
Is this, is this that empty lot?
That empty lot, yes. The neighbors also smell gas on occasion. We have residents there, and my family specifically, that have been there for over 60 years, and they've known the grounds, they've known what's in the ground. So, I'd like to see that project slowed down until the owners can come in and discuss that with us. I did speak to the owner and the developer, and they said they would be more than willing. One was out of country, out of the country at this time.
That's, that's in the same letter as the stop sign, I believe.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I got that one.
Yes, it is. And the DPW, I just had a question. Did they get their raise in a timely manner?
I'm sorry?
Their raise, the DPW, when the contract, they got it in a timely manner?
Yeah, they did. There was, there was confusion with a small group about some retro issues, but they were, they were settled.
They were?
Yeah.
Okay, because they're important to us. I wanted to get an update on the recreation project. I don't know if anybody has anything on that. I know Leo and Dave were working.
Yes, we actually put on the website, we advertised, we're looking for a group of citizen volunteers to put together a board to work on this community center, which we plan on starting and putting up, so.
Okay, I didn't see that.
And they'll be interviewed, they will grab some people, but we're, yeah, we're on it.
Okay, good. And I just have a comment. I was here for the last meeting, when I walked in, they were talking about some sort of discrepancy with the Civic Center and a program called ICal and Lori Manning's project. And Angel Carrion, yes, he was, he was speaking at the time. Since then, I just tried to get educated on what was going on. I spoke to Lori, I read an email, I heard Mr. Carrion had to say. And pretty much, I just want to say this, as a therapeutic caregiver, we always have to look at the big picture. This picture's not about Dave, we're not going to use him for a whipping boy, it's not about Lori Manning, and it's not about ICal. I, I don't know what the woman's name is, her name is, or something like that. What it is about, is about the children, and doing what's best, and what's in the best interest of our children. Lori, I've been to Lori Manning's lessons, I've been to her cultural affairs, I've been to ICal's zumba affairs and cut a step or two there, and I find it, both programs, as I read in the email, very worthy. We have to remember, if we as adults have shortcomings, and we can't communicate and work amongst ourselves, and don't have to be on TV and discuss things in public such as trying to work out things, then what are we teaching our children? We have to perhaps take a lesson from them, and remember, we have to keep our eyes, our eyes on the prize, and that's our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Ryan.
Wait, wait one second.
Mayor? Yes. What does the sign say? Turn the sign around. Turn the sign around. You'll see it.
Okay. Okay, Mayor.
You're going to go first?
Yeah. Okay, he's ready.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay, Ryan.
All right, well, once again, I'm Ryan, you know that at this point. I'm a student currently at Hackensack High School. With all due respect, I'm a minor, I don't have to give that, I'm from Maywood, but that doesn't matter. I'm a member of the community either way, I think I have the right to speak. I have the right to speak either way. Well, disregarded.
Let Ryan use his five minutes, please.
Thank you. First off, and I mean this with all due respect, I am rather insulted that you accuse us, all the students here, of being incapable of standing up for ourselves. We are here at our own bargaining, and solely for our own bargaining. Secondly, all of the information regarding the SRO was made to the public record last night at the Board of Education meeting. So I came here tonight with my friends because we are concerned about the current issue regarding the Student Resource Officer. Honestly, a lot of us don't feel safe without one, and I think rightfully so, considering the world we live in. And since my freshman year, I've been accustomed to having one, and, you know, it gave us a sense of security, and a sense of safety, and now that sense is gone. And I'm rather distraught that, that politicians here would jeopardize our safety, for whatever reason. There's like 1,500 students at Hackensack High School, and I think a Student Resource Officer is absolutely essential. So, that being said, a police officer is a police officer, no matter what, which is why I don't really understand how come the Board of Education would be expected to pay for that, but that's just my own belief. Excuse me, can I please talk? It's just absolutely mind-boggling that anybody would really think otherwise. So I really urge you to just reinstate the SRO at the high school, especially considering the world we live in. You know, it's a nightmare for every parent, I can tell you it's a nightmare for my parents, that if a massacre were to happen at that school, that we wouldn't have one. So why are you adding fuel to this fire? Again, the SRO really only benefits the community, and I really think it shouldn't be up for negotiation, it should just be reinstated right now. Thank you for your time.
Before I begin, I'd like to state, oh, I'm from Hackensack.
Thank you.
I'd like to state that I'm here by my own free will. I'm not being used. I'm merely a student taking interest and responsibility for issues going on regarding my school, and the safety of myself and my peers. I'm a current junior at Hackensack High School. As a student, I'm not personally invested in the political aspect of this issue. For me and for every other student that attends Hackensack High School, the primary issue is safety. Having an SRO present in our school is integral, not only to our safety, but also it deters students and outside individuals from doing things that they should not be doing. It's appalling to me that the adult leaders of this town cannot come to consensus on an issue concerning the safety of the students in HHS, and the young people that you are all role models and influences for. I only ask that you keep these ideas in mind during this pending case, in order to make an educated decision regarding this issue. The concern should not lie with the safety, the concern should lie with the safety of the students. Safety rather than money should be your top priority. Thank you.
I'm here at Hackensack, I'm a tax payer. I attend all of the Board of Education meetings, and as I understand it, the reason that the school hasn't paid for the school resource officer is because no bill was submitted. About two years ago, I opened records from the school district about the police officers who were attending the games and doing residency. At that time, there were no invoices from the city or the school. They paid, the school paid those invoices despite not having a bill for it. So for the attorney from the school board to throw it in our faces that sue us, you've already taken our money, please don't sue us again. Secondly, to pay 60% of the bill that's due, when you're taking 100% from my taxes, is totally not acceptable. We're from Hackensack. There are sending districts from Maywood, Rochelle Park, and South Hackensack. So to put it on only the Hackensack residents to pay is unconscionable. Sec, and thirdly, a school resource officer, I don't think many of the students or the adults here know what a school resource officer is. It's not simply to, yes, stay inside and patrol the area, but it is a teaching position. You go to be trained, and there are certain things that you do, including training on things, teaching on things such as bullying, or safety and all of those things. It's not simply to stand there as a patrol officer, and as I've seen it when I pass through the school, he's basically just standing there, but that's a whole nother subject. I'm going to move on to ICal. With ICal, I have an issue because ICal is using a city seal. I don't know if that's appropriate, because they're a nonprofit, they're using a city building, and seeking to charge a community group of children for using the Civic Center, and it's as if they have total control over that Civic Center for which I pay taxes. Again, both programs are worthy, but who gives them the right for total control over a city-owned building which my taxes pay for? So I think that situation should be addressed. I believe Dr. Carrion was here the other day, last week or whatever, and I think he had misinformation, and it's up to the community, it's for the community to know all of the situation, not part of it. Same, I'm, I'm sorry, when Mr. Abellino was up here, he introduced board members. There is another board member back there, and that's Carol Martinez, and he did not recognize her. He recognized the new board member, who I've never seen at any meetings other than the ones after she got elected. Mrs. Martinez has been here, she's been at the school board, and she has advocated for our children. So when you recognize everybody, recognize her also. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joseph Campania, www.ECC33.com, that's Hackensack. I'm here tonight representing the, a group of people, we are all immigrants, myself, I'm an immigrant, my grandparents came here from Italy, Sicily, and no matter how long you've been here, we all emerge from immigrants to this country. To cut to the chase, this is about the redevelopment. Let me for five minutes explain why I'm here. We, many citizens of the South Ward, want to establish, and we are forming, with permission and not, the Fair Street Redevelopment Committee that represents the crown of the South Ward. And in saying that, I want to say thank you to David Sensary, Alfred Sensary Enterprises, for providing such a beautiful cornerstone to a beautiful piece of architecture, which is Court Plaza, and there's a lot of development going on, but we somehow get left out. We had a little street called Fair Street between Kansas and State, that was the gateway to immigrants, that was our crown jewel, where we started businesses, where we had beautiful apartments, and if you look at www.ecc33.com, you'll see that it looks like it belongs in Alpine when you see that interior. My trust that owns the property, which may donate that property to create something beautiful in Hackensack, for Hackensack's children by, in memory of my parents and the son of a well-known entertainer, you know, I'm not going to divulge who it is because, not going to happen yet, because it's not going to happen without that property and us immigrants being recognized. Now, a lot of my friends are here tonight, a lot of them didn't come. We want Fair Street to be considered only for something that you did with Hudson Street, well, that a prior council did with Hudson Street. And with that, give us the seeds to turn that gateway into something that all of Hackensack can be proud of, especially us immigrants, all of us, because unless you're an American Indian, you're an immigrant. So we're all immigrants. So, that is part of a historic district in Hackensack. We don't have a historic district, so I'm asking that the council adopt a resolution to allow us, citizens, taxpayers, renters, who are also taxpayers, our kids go to school, to create part of the redevelopment committee as the Fair Street and South Ward Redevelopment Committee, to be on the board. We'd like to have the seeds to plant, to make that street look good, and we have people, other people who live and own property there are willing to put 10, 20, $30,000. My neighbor, he put $25,000 worth of a courtyard wall. I have beautiful architecture I can put up in vinyl on my place, but I'm holding back because we're waiting for, to see what you did. Now, Mr. Mordaga's done an excellent job of sorting out who the drug dealers are, who the criminals are, and who are the kids and, and poor people who are just going to work. And we're, and we're continuing to look at keeping the peace there on Fair Street. Bergen County has to do their job and provide some of their police as night guards, because I understand from Mr., one of Mr. Sensary's property managers, that the homeless have been bathing in that fountain, and sleeping on top of the Court Plaza, which I can hear them sometime. But do you know, it's another immigrant who lives on, in my property is the major, is the senior producer of the MLB Network, in other words, a prominent PhD, and they're also immigrants. So we're all immigrants, no matter whether we're Dominican, Italian, Colombian, so please, give us part of that redevelopment voice. Let us start pride in the first ward by helping us to redevelop Fair Street. Alls we need is a sidewalk and some planners, something nice, and we'll fix the rest up, and we'll have block parties, and we'll raise the money, and we'll get it together. Thank you very much, Rita.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is FJ Williams. Okay, good evening, Council, my name is FJ Williams, I represent Memphis, Republican Holding, and I came to ask about a property, 348 Railroad Avenue, as to what it can be used for. I talked with the city manager here the last time, and he told me to keep a record of what was going on. I talked with Al Varela today, he said there would be no buses there. Every morning at between 4:30 and 5 o'clock, the buses, there are 25 or 30 buses running two or three hours. I wake up in the morning with a headache. Now, what I have to do is, I had to go to the doctor, and I had to use a CPAP. Now, city manager asked me to keep a record of all the calls, and I reported. I have a list of all the calls here, and I give each one of you, that you can look and you can keep. I'd appreciate if you can tell me what that property can be used for. Mr. Varela told me it can only be used to repair two buses, but at night, it's 25, 30 buses, it's running. Thank you for your time, I'd appreciate if you're looking to that.
Thank you, we'll look into that. Thank you, Mr. Varela. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Stephen Coff, I live in Fairlawn, New Jersey. I am a, I'm, I'm a commissioner on the Housing Authority Board.
Yes.
For Bergen County, and I would just like a clarification, as Michael Mordaga is here, of what exactly the Quality of Life Initiative is supposed to do. I'm still having issues with his officers using excessive force for jaywalking, just wandering, you know, walking the streets of Hackensack, which everybody is allowed to do. I also would like to know if we can have a more open dialogue between the council, the police department, and the housing authorities, so that we can address problems as they come up, not when it ends up in the paper. I don't think that we need to have this, you know, constantly out here, we can take care of this and have everything work out just fine, but there are several officers on the force that I do not believe should be on, on that specific project. Their past aggressive behavior has led to numerous lawsuits in Hackensack, and I just need to know if maybe we can tone it down a bit, or at least be a little more tolerant of people that are the most fragile in Hackensack.
Something we'd have to speak with, with Director Mordaga about?
Yeah, we, we certainly will discuss that, but, but the Quality of Life Initiative is all-encompassing in terms of addressing quality of life issues, and there are a number of issues like that. What town are you from, sir?
I'm from Fairlawn.
You're from Fairlawn. If I heard you correctly, you're trying to make a judgment on which police officers we should be using, they're being, no, 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 let me finish. That are being directed by a police professional, a police director of Mr. Mordaga's abilities, you think he's using them incorrectly. Is that what I hear?
I don't know if, either he doesn't know what they're doing, or he does know what they're doing, because I personally witnessed very aggressive behavior.
I can assure you, he knows what they're doing, as the report relates to me, what they're doing. I take issue with that allegation coming from someone who doesn't even live in Hackensack.
I worked in Hackensack for 20 years, and I'm very familiar with the town.
Coming from someone who doesn't even live in Hackensack, we have serious issues.
But I am a commissioner for the Housing Authority of all of Bergen County.
We have serious issues that we are being proactive on, and we are addressing, and we will continue to do that, and we have the ultimate police professional guiding those police officers.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I may need more than five minutes, I'm asking if I go five minutes, please. Carol Martinez, 185 Prospect Avenue, I'm here to speak as a community member. First, I would like to know, city manager, when did you become a city manager?
When did I become?
Yeah, what year did you become city manager?
1999.
In Hackensack?
Hackensack, 2005.
Okay. Who was in charge of giving the invoice to the Board of Ed?
I don't know.
Or the SRO?
I don't know if there was an invoice ever submitted.
There was in the past, and...
When you're saying an invoice, you're talking about a paper invoice, I don't know that ever.
In order for the Board of Education to reimburse the police officers, or the police department. There had to be an invoice, because if right now, the Board of Education is not paying, or reimbursing the police department, because there was no invoice, and they were paying prior to 2005, that means there was an invoice. So my question is, who was in charge of providing an invoice to the Board of Education?
Again, I, I'm not certain there ever was an invoice, and the responsibility for processing that kind of a thing would be the finance office's responsibility, not the police.
And who was that at the time?
Well, it depends on what time you're referring to. We had some very serious...
2005, 2006, 2007, 2008, 2009, until now.
The root cause of the problem may go back further than that, and, and we had issues which we took corrective action on not long after I got here in 2005, 2006, in that, in that office.
So there are two scenarios here. So let's pretend there was never an invoice. So that right there excuses the Board of Education from making an excuse to saying that we never received an invoice, so therefore we're not going to pay the police department. That's one. If there was an invoice, my question is, as a taxpayer, what took place between the moment that we stopped paying or reimbursing the Hackensack Police Department until now? What happened? Something had to happen, some change had to occur, and nobody seems to bring that up. Everybody's just saying, there's no SRO, you know, the school is not safe, but nobody's digging into the root of the problem here. And nobody can give me an answer. And my thing is, had the administration been different, none of this would be happening. Now, I don't stand in either side, I'm neutral, but I'm being fair. So it is just suspicious or mind-boggling that now this is coming up, and nobody has answers. Whether there was an invoice or not, something had to happen. Now, I'm so upset that the kids left, because, you know, as an educator, I applaud students who speak for themselves. Thank you, I'm glad you're here. Now, when information is given, you cannot believe everything you hear, you must do your own research, okay? And there, there is information out there that it seems that some of you have not looked into. Now, if you go online to the district policies, you will see that one of the things being said there is that the district is supposed to make sure we provide a safety environment to the district, and that includes any law enforcement, okay? Now, the student named Ryan, you came here and you said that yesterday's board meeting, you received all the information you needed. False. There is some information you did not get, okay? So you cannot say, oh, maybe in your mind, you received all the information you needed, but you, you did not receive all the information that was supposed to be given to you to come here. I'm being fair. I'm now a board member, but I'm not going to sit here and allow another board member come here and say, I'm speaking on behalf of the board, when I'm one, and I don't agree to everything that was said. In fact, last night at the board meeting, I made the huge mistake, and you should pay attention, to say, okay, to have Mr. Frank Abellino come here and speak for the Board of Ed. Now, I did, it did not occur to me to ask, why do we need a board representative, when we have a board attorney, that's first. And what is he going to say, or how is he going to respond? So now, I have to speak for myself as a board member, because I did not like what I heard. I was told, well, Mr. Abellino said that it was the first time he heard there was a meeting today, maybe, today, yes, is the first time that I hear this, that there's going to be a meeting, that you guys discuss this today. But we were aware that there was a meeting on the 7th, and there was some correspondence then to you guys. We were aware of that, I just want to make that clarification. Now, as far as the SRO, yes, we need one at the school, but do you know why we don't have one? You're just saying we need one, and you're coming here, speaking to them, when you should be going to the board, speaking to the board. This is a board decision, not city council. And I'm not going to stand here and lose my integrity just to be politically correct, I could care less, and I think people that know me know that. I don't stand in either side. I just want to make sure I don't forget. My advice to some of you students is, go online, go to the Hackensack Board of Education, go to the New Jersey Administrative Code 6A, Chapter 15, bring it to school safety, and that will give you answers. Go into Policy 3510, you will have some answers there. Thank you.
Richard Saltin, I'm the attorney for the Hackensack Board of Education. I wasn't, really wasn't planning on speaking, and I'm not going to try to engage you in negotiations, this is not the time or place, although I didn't know anything about a meeting. We heard there was a call put in by the city manager to the superintendent's office, but he, the, the week of their convention, they're down in Atlantic City, and there was intense, but it's good. I'm happy, happily recommend a joint meeting. We cannot pay without an invoice, you cannot pay without an invoice. That's the way public entities have to do business. Ms. Stewart, I give her high marks because she was persistent years ago in, in pointing out instances where it was much too informal in terms of paying police officers for these, these overtime, these special assignments, and, and there was a crackdown, and I think you don't continue to do what's wrong, perhaps illegal, once you find it's going on. You mend your ways, and frankly, that's what the school district did. As far as viewing the sending districts as a cornucopia, as, as pot of gold, the cost of a school resource officer is included in the formula, which if you, if you care to look at, in Title 6A of the Administrative Code, Title 18, is what my, is within the formula of how the tuition is calculated. The particular tuition agreements that are in place between Hackensack and the three sending districts were hardly, hard-fought and negotiated and brokered the eventual settlements within the office of the county superintendent of schools. You're not, they're not a source to go and hit up again. As far as this entire, this entire controversy discussion, you're right, the most ridiculous thing that could happen would be litigating. would be litigation between the city and the Board of Education. Mr. Screevo and I, I'm sure, would do well. That's not the point of either of our service, to the community, to the entities. I look forward to a dialogue. As I said in my letter, I'm sure there's gotta be a middle ground where everyone will go away. And most settlements are a little bit angry, a little bit happy. And that's what I hope we can do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sol. Sir?
Yes, I was up here once already.
I know, you're only allowed to come up...
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up a topic about SRO.
I understand that, but it's against...
I mean, alright.
It's against, we can only allow... We went through this once before, I'm sorry. Mr. Beretta.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Beretta, Poplar Avenue. I just wanted to make a comment, Mr. Mayor and Counsel.
Yes.
Soon as they stop. I wanted to tell you that I agreed with you when the meeting first began about using students for just political purposes. In that same vein, I have to say, I was really just disgusted at how the kids were treated when they came up here. Not by anyone sitting up there, but by people sitting here who I know have kids of their own. You have kids who are learning the process, and they're coming up and trying to partake in the process. They're kids. If we want them to be involved, then we have to teach them. By peppering them with, "Where did you come from? Where do you live?" They're kids. And I give them credit for coming up and speaking so eloquently here in front of everybody else, whether you agree with what they're saying or not. But seriously, to have them standing here and hearing the comments made right behind them is not fair. It's uncalled for. And I just hope that the next time students come up here and you see that happening, please put an end to it at the audience behind. It's not fair. These kids deserve better. They're out there, they busted their butt, and they spoke well. And anybody, any one of us back here who have kids, I would love to see your kids come up here and be as eloquent, right on the spot. It was pretty amazing. But to hear the comments was disgusting. And you hear the comments still. And I guess there are two types of people, those that are educated and those that are uneducated. Thank you.
Mildred Dotson. Oh, okay, alright. Mildred Dotson, can you hear me now? Okay.
Gotcha.
I would just like to say a couple of things. From the beginning of the meeting, when the mayor spoke about the flyer that was put out, and then the kids appeared, and then we started to act like adults, and they started to act like kids. We said something, and then they said something. But this is what happens. I just want to say that what you're getting is somebody else's problem. And now, everybody wants you to sort out the problem. This problem didn't begin just yesterday. This problem has been going on for years. So now, Mr. Abellino finds the time to come and say all of the reasons why the high school needs a resource officer. I think the high school needs a resource officer, too. As long as he's not sitting in the office doing nothing, as long as he's outside patrolling the parking lots. And all of us know that that Central Avenue and First Street is filled with drugs. And for them to bring a police officer outside of the school did us just as much justice outside as it did us inside. Now, I'm not saying not to put one there, but I am saying this. If they made the bill, they should pay the bill.
That's right, that's right.
You said that you would go into a meeting with them and discuss it? For no reason should you discuss 60%. That is not your bill. That bill was made before you all got there. And if the parents and the people in Hackensack would start coming to meetings and not just showing up for one meeting because something is being talked about, what you want to hear, and come to all of the meetings, then they won't have to walk out with misinformation. Because we all know, we all know that resource officer in that school was... It wasn't you that didn't pay him. And we all know, if we want to admit it, who didn't pay him. So why should they dump it in your lap and tell you that you have to pay them? Or you have to put a resource officer back in the school because the kids feel threatened, and the kids feel this, and the kids feel that? No. They should pay their bill. If the sending district paid them, then they should have made sure that they got paid. So when you go into meeting, call me.
Regina DePasco, Parker Avenue. I'd like to talk about a flyer, but it's a different flyer this Saturday. Hackensack Make a Difference Day, ball cleanup, citywide. I didn't hear any mention of that. And at 12:01, Hackensack elves are having lunch, okay? I listen, and you know, I am upset by this flyer. Whoever did this flyer, shame on you. Shame on you. You don't even have the decency to put your own name on it, okay? I don't understand why... I felt my son was safe in the school before today, before somebody put it out publicly that we don't have police in the school, that the hype, the fear-mongering of this, that Hackensack High School is in an extremely vulnerable state. To put that out there is irresponsible. And I want to know who did it, because that was wrong. They're trying to play on parents' fear, especially since there was a school shooting yesterday in Nevada. They're trying to play on parents' fear. And whoever did this is irresponsible. And I want somebody to find out who did this, because the principal of Hackensack High School didn't know this was being handed out, and the Board of Ed didn't know it was being handed out. Now, if these things could get handed out without Board approval, and this can go on in school without... I don't think the school resource officer would be the one to handle this. But it should have been noticed by somebody. How did this happen? I want to know how this happened. And I know that's not your place. But I'm angry because somebody put my child... Yes, I do have a child. Yes, I do. And I would not interject them into politics, okay? And the financial part of it is not his business either. So, attention Hackensack High School students. It's none of their business, the politics, the finances. I object to 60%. If you pay a dime, I will object, because I pay my municipal taxes, I pay my school taxes. Why should I pay both? Right? You're putting a hand in both pockets, then. The Board of Ed is putting a hand in both pockets, and I object to that. Mr. Abellino has left. I listened intently to what he said. Not once did he say the word "safety" when he was talking about the school resource officer. Not once. He'll make the students feel comfortable, they have somebody to talk to. I thought the school had guidance counselors for that, okay? Not once did he mention the word "safety." But he did say that the resource officer is in the municipal budget and the school budget. I believe that's wrong. I don't believe a school resource officer is in the municipal budget. And if I'm wrong, please, please correct me. But I disagree. I see a police officer, two, three police officers every day at the high school outside. I see them when I drop my son off. I am more comfortable with them seeing who's going into the building than being in the building and not knowing who's coming in. So that works for me. But after this, I was angry. I'm angry. Somebody put it out there publicly that we don't have police in our school. And that's an open invitation to a lunatic that somebody did, and that was irresponsible.
Kathleen Salvo, 184 Hudson Street. The reason when somebody comes up here, you're supposed to state your address, and that's why we were asking. I commend the students that came here today, but unfortunately, they were misinformed, and they need to do their homework before they take a stand, literally, a stand on something, because there's two sides to every story. And I think that flyer, if they came here because of that flyer, that was the wrong reason to come. We like them to get involved in what's happening, but we don't want to use them to do the dirty work, so to speak. I took it upon myself to call Mr. Bloom, who is a good friend of mine, and to ask when this resource officer was started. It was started when my Kim was in school. It was back in the 80s. I remember Kenny Morton, I remember Freddie Puglisi. And the whole inception of the program was for the outside of the school. The students felt that their cars were being vandalized. They didn't like what was going on outside. So Mr. Bloom, with Chief Yorado, put together this PAC that they were going to get an officer to be on the school grounds. He would walk around the building, he would walk in the parking lot, he would say hello to the kids. But it was always for the circumference of the school. Like Stephen did his homework and found out that that's what it was. Because the problems are outside the school. A resource officer, while he's in the school, that building is so big. If he's on the Beet Street side, and something happens on the other side, it takes them like 15 minutes to get across. But Mr. Bloom said that they were very comfortable with the officer being on the outside, and that's how it all started. As far as what's going to happen now, other towns do hire retired police officers to come in at lesser money, if the Board of Ed didn't want to spend so much money. But remember, people, the money that's spent for either the Board of Ed or the city comes from the same pocketbook. It comes from the taxpayers. So we don't want to double pay. We don't want to pay our city taxes and then, again, pay it for the Board of Ed. And the other sad thing is that if they know they weren't paying, what are we sending a message to our kids? If you can get away with it, get away with it? What kind of integrity? What are we teaching them? Are we teaching them that the crime is getting caught? It's not committing the crime. It's when you get caught, that's when it becomes a crime? If you have to pay your bill, you pay your bills. We don't, it's integrity. It's honesty. What kind of message are we sending? But if we can get them at a cheaper, a more reasonable price by using retirees to come in and do it, and if we feel that we need somebody present... But like we said, a resource officer is trained. It's not just a regular police officer. And Michael is doing a great job on the outside. We commend him for all the drug arrests. The first week, I think, it was record-breaking. I don't think there ever was an arrest with the resource officers inside. I mean, the problems were always outside. Thank you.
Rich Gilbert, Clinton Place, Hackensack. A very big question that I have to raise. We had a city attorney that sat up here for 12 years in previous administrations, left City Hall and went to the Board of Ed for about seven years. If anybody left here, knowing the policies and practices and protocols of how the city and the Board of Ed work together, was Mr. Solken. That's who we should be asking, what happened with this payment? It's two coincidences of when the moves happened and when that money stopped coming across. It's a million bucks, and I implore you, provide no services until the city is reimbursed. One other point. I don't have the exact statistics, but I'm told that in two years, the last two years of our longstanding SRO's history, there was a couple of arrests made in the school. That's what I'm told.
Inside the school?
Yeah. In the first two weeks of school, ask the Police Department how many serious felony arrests were made. We're now seeing protection around the school property, something we haven't seen in a long time. So I would say, leave the policing to the professional.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenneth Martin, Hackensack 336, Hamilton Place. I also like to speak on the SRO program. Not only that I was the first SRO here in Hackensack, I was also named national twice for the School Resource Officer Program. I also served on the New Jersey School Resource Officer Committee here in the state as a training and as an advisor for the state. I'm here to speak on the safety of the program. A question was asked, will there be a SRO at the school tomorrow? And the answer was no. Safety, again. We just had a shooting yesterday in Nevada. Seventh grader, I repeat, a seventh grader picked, took the gun from the family home, came to school, shot, stopped firing in the schoolyard, killing a couple students, also killing, also killed a teacher who was defending the students. Regardless of what, we're talking about safety. I'm saying move forward. Forget about money. Forget about this. Let the council handle that. Let the school work that out. But I'm asking the council to put that school officer back immediately. We're talking about our student lives. We're talking about your kids. We're talking about every one else's kids. This now has gotten out that there's not an SRO at the school. An SRO, meaning that the SRO is in the school, also outside the school. And what I did when I was there, I foot-patrolled the school outside and as well as inside. I assist the administrators in the needs that is necessary within the school. Hackensack is a busy town. There's a lot going on in that community. The high school is a community within itself. And we have problems that I will never share with anyone in this audience, with our students, that they bring to their school from home, from the internet, on Facebook, and all the other nonsense that goes on with our media computers and all that other stuff. We have a lot to do with our kids, and we need to move forward. I say, put the officer there tomorrow, immediately, 7:30 in the morning, not 8, but 7:30 in the morning, so he can receive those students as they come into that building and see a familiar face. I say, and I pledge to you, have him there immediately, because if we don't, we're going to have a problem. This information is going to get out to the other communities that we don't have a SRO there. Now, an SRO is someone that, like I said, patrol the building and the grounds. You have someone outside in the vehicle that drives around the building, but I don't think that's enough. Inside as well as outside is important. And you've got to remember, the SRO wears several hats. He wears more than just, as you would see, a guard walking your ground inside the building. He should be outside as well as inside. Just thank you for your time, and I mean, whatever I can do. Hackensack is my home for over five generations, and I've been volunteering my service since I've left retired from the district. I've been volunteering my service with the district and helping them with their safety plans and offering my expertise. But this here, we really need to get this straightened out immediately. We need to be proactive and not reactive. As soon as something seriously happens, we are going to be out protesting and screaming and hollering why we didn't do something sooner. Let's not wait. Let's be proactive. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pedro Alvecio, 19 Spring Valley Avenue. I'm the parent of two high school students and a former, and a graduate of the high school when Detective Martin was there. I have a, I'm very curious about how this works, and I really have no decided opinion. I need some more information. When the fire department responds to a fire drill at the school, or a fire at the school, is a bill sent to our Board of Education? I, okay, I kind of think I know the answer to that is no. When the garbage is collected at our school, is there a separate bill sent to our school? Or are those, these are citizens of our school. They're under eighteen, yes, maybe they're only half-citizens, I don't know. Sorry, guys. But they're citizens of our community, and it is our city's job to protect them. Whose job was it? Somebody dropped the ball with the communication. This is clearly just a communication issue. It's a shame. All of us, everyone, including me, has a responsibility, because every year I voted on a school budget. And every year I voted in this city, every time the city council has come up, I've had an opportunity to vote. None of us noticed, and now we're hating each other for this mistake. It's ridiculous, and it's embarrassing that our students are watching us fight like children again here. It's embarrassing. The bottom line is, I'm sorry, the idea that there was no problem until people found out our children weren't protected? That just escapes me, I don't understand that. If their children are being guarded by a police officer who is supervising the school inside, and now there's more arrests outside the school because we don't have a resource officer? Where were the police before? The crimes were being committed. It's not like the crime started because there was a resource officer in the building. That's ridiculous. Those resource officers, I remember seeing Detective Martin arrest students for repeated fire drills and bomb scares and drugs. I remember that, and I also remember knowing that we would be treated fairly as a student. And I believe my children are treated fairly as students. This has got to be worked out. This is petty, and it really needs to be worked out, it's embarrassing. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Judith Carter, 214 Hamilton Place. I'm a longtime resident of Hackensack, too. And first of all, we have to stop pushing our children to do the wrong thing and provide them with the right information. I also went to Hackensack High School, and we had police and Herbie Reed and Johnson. They also patrolled the area outside. We had one principal, Mr. Bloom and Mr. Ballman. Now we have four principals in the high school. Seems like the four principals in the high school also can go around and pay attention as to what's going on inside the school while we have the Hackensack Police Department patrolling outside the school. So everybody has a part of this. And as far as this double payment, I think you should tell them no and let the school be responsible for the bill themselves.
Counsel, my name is Tommy Ellis, Hackensack 167 Poplar Avenue. I just, I don't get up here very often, but I've been listening all night. And I come through high school with Mr. Muddaga. I worked with him in the police department. He's, there's no one that could say anything about his integrity and his capabilities of doing the job. I listen to a lot of things that people are saying, but I remember back when he was on the street, he knew things that most people didn't know about themselves. If there was something going to happen, it just, you know, Mike found a way to find out about something that was going to happen. And I just believe that in the meantime, between the council and the board, finding whatever resolution there is, I think people are worrying a little more than they need to worry about. He is more than capable. I'm a taxpayer. I would put my life on the line for him, and I know we'd do the same for me. And I know that we're safe, and you can see how the politics before affected the police department. There's no politics there now, and he's making more arrests on the outside than there ever was. So I think a lot of people are tending to worry about the safety. And I'm not saying that you don't have to worry about it, it's good to worry about it. But until these things work their way out, you guys discuss it with the board and something gets done. I've had conversations with Mike Muddaga, and the initiatives he's putting together weren't even dreamed of when Kenny Zizo was the chief. He had no class thinking about that. What he's done and put together, getting the county police together and uniting the towns around us, should have been done a long time ago, but politics was in the way. Mike has been in politics, but he doesn't let a politics cloud his vision. Absolutely not. I think everybody here that has a question about our safety, I think they have to be, I can assure you, you've got the best guy for the job right now. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
First of all, the first thing I want to do is commend Kenny Martin and the career he had as an SRO in Hackensack High School. He's a great guy, he was a great friend to the students of Hackensack High School for many, many years. Excellent job. I didn't plan to come up and speak tonight, but you know, after listening to everything, really, I'm here just to assure the students in the high school and the parents about the, right now, the controversy of the payment, controversy that's going to take place between the city council and the Board of Ed will take place, and it will be resolved. And until it's resolved, be assured that the police are going to be there every day protecting you. And they have been. Since the first day of school, there's been a full-time police officer at that high school. And I know Officer Martin, Kenny Martin brought up the fact about the shooting yesterday in the school. Right now, my job is to keep you safe. And if a gunman is going to come for that school, and right now, if the resource officer is sitting in the school or in the hallways, the gunman's going to be in before he knows it. Right now, we're protecting the perimeter of that school from what's going on out there, from these shootings. If there's somebody that has a copycat situation going on, our officers are equipped outside to stop them from coming in. Okay? That is what we're doing, and our officers are doing a good job. Should we have a school resource officer? Yes. Do I hope we're going to have this resolved soon? Yes, and I think the council believes we should have a school resource officer. I went to the last Board of Ed meeting prior to this one and suggested we have a school resource officer in the high school and the middle school. So I'm all for the resource officers, okay? The payment, though, has to come to a conclusion between the city and the Board of Ed. Okay? And I'm sure it will. And the little things that are being said about, you know, why it's not happening or who should pay, it's all going to be resolved. But feel confident and be assured that every student, every teacher, and everybody that goes to that school is going to be safe in the intro. Thank you.
Lesson two. Anybody else in the public like to speak? Get back up again, you already got back up. You cannot get back up twice, sir, I'm sorry. Now you have to deal with the Board of Ed. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to get a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I'll offer.
Offered.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, counsel would like to speak. Mrs. Candice Reno.
I'll try, I'll try and also be brief. I know it's late, but I feel that I have to just make a few comments after all the discussions that took place this evening. One thing we have to make, I want to make very, very clear, is that this, all of this discussion is not whether or not there should be an SRO in the high school. The city has no input into whether there should be an SRO in the high school or not. That is a decision solely made by the Board of Education, because that's their responsibility. The security of the school is their responsibility. The only thing that's being discussed, and will be discussed in this future meeting, between the Board of Education and the city council, is which budget does it belong in? That's the only thing that has to be worked out, is which budget does the cost for this SRO belong in? Now, I see we have some students that stayed, and I thank you, and we have some people here, so I'm going to give you kind of a little brief lesson in budgeting, so I hope I don't bore you to death. But let's just take this back and think about what happened. Mr. Martin filled that role for many years, for over twenty years. Mr. Martin, your salary was budgeted by the Board of Education and paid for by the Board of Education, because it was a service that was required, and they paid for that. Something happened in 2006. None of these council members were on the council at that time. I don't know what happened in 2006, and I don't even care what happened in 2006. All I care about is that we fix this and move forward. In 2006, it was in the school board's budget, so they had a budgeted item for a resource officer. Understand what that means. There was an amount of money in a pocket there, and this is to go and pay for a resource officer. They had a resource officer that year, I believe it was still Mr. Martin. They had a resource, they had that service. What that means is at the end of the year, they physically have to look at that pocket. It can't be moved from there. They have to look at that pocket and say, look, this hundred thousand dollars is still here. We didn't spend it. We didn't reimburse our friend, the city, for the service that we know we're obliged to pay. Good, we got away with it. Next year, 2007, same thing. We budget again. We get Mr. Martin. Again, we don't pay the city. At the end of the year, we physically have to cancel that budget, we have to look at it. We don't call our friend, the city, and say to them, something happened, you supplied Mr. Martin for the year, and you didn't collect. What went wrong here? I don't understand what happened. But we, as city council people, have to be concerned that this did happen, that this behavior did happen. When you look at how this all works, it's not that the city has money and they give it to the school. That's not the way it works, right? The taxpayers are assessed a certain amount of money. They pay their taxes. The county takes some, yes? The city takes some, and the school takes some. The city and the school budgets are divided, right? The school maintains its budget, it allocates, it says what it needs, and the city does the same. So when you're trying to decide where an item should be in a budget, you look at the source of that expense. What is the source of the SRO? It's the school. It's not the city. If we did not have a high school, would the city be paying for an SRO? That's the question you have to ask yourself, and the answer is no. The school is the person or the entity that requires an SRO, and that is the budget that it has always been in, and that is the budget that it belongs in. One last statement. Mr. Salkin made a very interesting point when he talked about the contributing towns, the sending districts. Because really, Hackensack High School is a regional high school. We do have districts that send their students. And those districts are assessed a tuition, as Mr. Salkin said. And I believe you said, Mr. Salkin, that in that formula is a percentage for security or safety. So let's think about it. When these sending districts are creating that or sending us that money of tuition, where are they getting it from? Are they getting it from their police department's budget? I don't think so. They're getting it from their school allotment. All the city is asking the Board of Education is to give the Hackensack residents and the city of Hackensack the same courtesy that we're giving to the sending districts. And that money belongs, as it always has been, and should come from the source of that expense, which is the Board of Education budget. Thank you.
Ms. Greenman, would you like to say anything?
Yes. As I said all along, this is not about safety. This is all about money. And just like Mr. Gilbert said, they made the children political props. That is not the way to go. This is not a propaganda machine. And all those people coming up and telling their stories and behaving so poorly, that is not the way to educate our kids. This SRO, based on what I read and what I understand, functions as a social worker, a therapist, a teacher. It does not function as a police officer inside the school. If you remember, and this is a very old movie, The Boys Town, and if you remember Father Flanagan, that is the role of the SRO. The SRO is there to discuss issues, to provide the resource for the kids to come and share some concerns. He's there to create an avenue between the police and our future, the children, so they feel safe, so they feel secure in confiding some of the information that could be very sensitive to police officers. Furthermore, I wish the, I can't recall the man's name, homeless person who found, Mr. Grady, thank you so much, who found the eight hundred and fifty dollars, and he could have just taken it. He was in a dire need of money, he was homeless, but he did the right thing. I'm proud to be a human being, having shared this earth with Mr. Grady. On the other hand, Mr. Salkin found the money and he said, hey, nobody's asking, it's ours. We do not have to give it back to them. This is not the way to be. Shame on you, Mr. Salkin. Shame on you. That is a horrible way to be. I hope children who are listening to it do not swallow the bait, listen to all the things that are being said here now. Do not trust adults just because they're adults. Read, understand, process the information, and then decide what is the right way to go. Thank you.
Mr. Sims?
We have to change the tape.
Three-tape night, sorry, folks. Good, okay, ready? Mr. Sims, roll.
Good evening. Good evening. I met with ICAL before tonight's council meeting. We sat down. We want to meet one day next week with Ms. Manning to clear the air and put an end to that. Thank you.
Thank you. On that note, I'm glad that issue's come to a resolve, that they had that meeting, and I think that was important. Moving forward, obviously, Mrs. Manning does some good work, and so does ICAL, and that's good for the city and good for the children in Hackensack. The SRO issue. And I want to reiterate, we'll talk about Mr. Brady. I mean, here's a guy who, like Ms. Greenman said, found eight hundred and fifty bucks when he was down on his luck and gave it back. And I understand, okay, there has to be a bill. Okay, there has to be a bill. Well, if you owe it, or if you know you have the money, you owed it and you received a bill, I would think that we would get a phone call or a tip or something. Hey, we need a bill so we can pay you. Rest assured, at public service, not been paid or forgot to send a bill to Hackensack High School for a year, and then they realized it, and Hackensack High School said, well, we're not paying you. Well, guess what? The lights would be out. That's exactly what would happen. Now, it were three years, I think it was '05, '06, '07, or maybe '06, '07, '08, where it was last budgeted. And in my opinion, if you budgeted that money, and we gave you the service, the taxpayers are now paying twice for it if you did not pay for it. That money went back into your budget, back into surplus, and we don't even know what you did with it. So we need to know these things. And it's in my strong opinion that the city of Hackensack, Police Department in particular, should be reimbursed for at least a year as it was budgeted, if not more. There's been some back and forth, you know, that the fear mongering is, we're all talking about an SRO in one school, right? We have four elementary schools and a middle school and five, six school. Mr. Martin said a seventh grader did the shooting yesterday. Well, should the SRO go to the middle school then instead of the high school? You folks tell me. Because it makes no sense that nobody even in here only cared about the high school kids. Not one person mentioned an elementary school safety system. Nobody cared, all right? And that just shows you the fear mongering and the politics involved, all right? One woman said, why don't we pay the fire department, put out fires? Rest assured, if the fire department had to have a fireman in the school all year, you'd be paying for a fireman in the school all year. It's not the issue of responding to a call or the fire, responding to an emergency from the police department. Of course, they're going to come. This is about an SRO. We are not against having the SRO, but in fact, we're all in favor of having an SRO. We're also in favor of Mr. Muddaga keeping up the continuing observation and surveillance at the perimeter of the high school. It's already proven that in, what, five weeks? I think we've had six drug arrests in that area. I mean, that, that speaks for itself. The, you know, it, it really comes down to what Ms. Candice Reno said, is what budget does it belong in? Well, clearly, states in the code, and I think in the, in the, in the State Board of Ed, State Board of Education code, that the city or the Board of Educations are responsible for the security in their schools. Now, there was some misleading information. There was a letter sent to the council, which we will be addressing with the Board of Ed when we meet with them. Hopefully, this meeting will come soon, and we can resolve this issue. Everybody's in favor of an SRO. That's not the point here. The point is who's paying for it, all right? This city, let me, let me make something clear about this council. This council's newly elected. We're here since July 1st. What we have had land on us or dumped on us when we took over is beyond belief, beyond belief. Multi-million-dollar tax appeals from 2006, sitting on our plate. We have, we find a perfect example. Could be up to $1 million in un invoiced bills that were never paid for an SRO, all right? It's our job as elected officials to look at these things and see what happened. And we're trying to see what happened, all right? The thing, to me, I'm sorry, you guys, with your flyer, you think it's great? I thought it was totally irresponsible and fear mongering. And you know what? I think it's great that kids get involved in government. I think it's great that you come up here and speak, and I respect that. But you need to get all the information, and don't let a few lead you down the path, all right? I grew up in a, in a time when we were told the big thing was question authority, all right? And I always did. You question authority, but you get all the information. There's always two sides to a story, all right? And sometimes three. It's important to get all your information and do your homework, all right?